I think it's land you, I think they're connected. It's coming up.
He has to play our theme song. Regularly scheduled, almost postponed from last week, meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission, it was changed from the third to the tenth because we need to have a quorum present. August 10th, 2006 meeting, it is 2:31. We have a full board here. I'd like to say we're very sorry to announce that Wayne Key, who is a longtime member and a service safety director, finally lost that mighty battle he had with cancer. And he died on, what, Tuesday night?
Tuesday, Tuesday.
Tuesday night. And so Mr. Ray Haslett, who has been, is going to take his place acting, you're going to be the interim or acting or whatever. Whatever. And so that means that he can then serve on the board. Previously, we did not have anybody come because there was some feeling that state law said that it had to be the service safety director, you couldn't have a substitute. Now, and we all feel very badly about Wayne, he was such a big help to us, and we asked if he had the green book. If any of you are regulars at our meeting, Wayne always had his green book. And we'd say, Wayne, check the green book, so we could have the right definition and know what we're talking about. So we don't have the green book, but we're going to find a copy of that green book. If you plan to say anything, we take sworn testimony statements. Would you stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear and/or affirm that what you will be saying is the truth?
Yes.
Have you all signed in? Everybody signed in? There was one request to change the agenda. I don't, I can't do that without a motion to do that. I don't know whether you want to do that or not. We don't know how long, the first case is Summit at Coates Creek, which is 0613. And 0610 is second, because they're back again. So we've had a request from that group to change the agenda. You don't want to change the agenda?
Well, I have a feeling that 0610 may take a while, too.
So, okay.
And so I think we ought to leave the agenda as it is.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay, we'll go as fast as we can, and then you'll have to run. We didn't change it. So what we have is case 0613, previously called Campus Edge, now called the Summit at Coates Creek. And this is a pre-application meeting. We have been given a preliminary development plan here. And would anybody like to speak to this, please? I think you know the, what you're supposed to do.
Good afternoon, I'm Rick Kirk with the Edwards Companies from Columbus. Back to see you again. And with me is Ryan Pearson from the Edge Group. We're here on the property that we are now calling the Summit at Coates Run. You folks have seen several versions of this in the past, and we have recently made an agreement to take control of the property, and we'll do our best to develop this with the quality that we have intended in the past as we've been here. And I'd like to start with an overview here of the area. The site is a 32-plus-or-minus-acre site located here with frontage along Richland Avenue, adjacent to the Greenbrier subdivision. As you can see from this aerial photo, the site was, has been previously logged and cleared, and the vegetation that once existed is now minimized. And so you have an existing site that has some erosion and runoff problems that we think we can help to solve here with the development the way we have proposed. Closer proximity of the site, you can see some of the remaining logging roads, and again, some of the existing vegetation, and closer proximity of Richland Avenue and Dairy One of the things that we like to do, and have done in the past, and continue to do, is to survey the existing images and features of a site. We're on a hill, we also have on the front and the back some streams. These are some images of Coates Run, which we think is an attractive feature. It needs some minor cleanup from some cinder blocks and things, which we would propose to do. But we also think that we can make this a visual feature that can be viewed from Richland Avenue and enhanced for the purpose of the development, and also the Richland Avenue corridor, which we think is an important part of your community. These are some inspiration photos of properties that we have developed. This photo is, we think, pertinent because it shows property that we have in Columbus where we had an existing stream that was overgrown and dried up. And we went in and worked with, in this case, the city of Columbus. We donated the ground to the city of Columbus's parkland, and then we maintain it for the city of Columbus. But you can see the existing water feature here that has now mowed and has been replanted with some of the natural grasses. In this particular case, we added some artwork, some horse sculptures that we had made from an artist in Columbus. This is another view of the stream land and how it's been rebuilt. This feature over here, I'm going to try and stay close to the microphone, is a project that we have nearby Columbus where we built a facility which we, for the city of Dublin, which is a parkland. And on the top of a hill, we put some rabbit sculptures, which are called dancing hares. And it's something that is fun for the community, and that particular one is a single-family development. But it's meant to be something that when folks in the community drive by, they have a warm feeling that the development's been done responsibly and moves in with it, works in with the community. This is a project that we built in Cincinnati where we had an existing stream that we called a linear park, and we did rework the stream, put in some flowers, and then we continue This is our site plan. I'll tell you that this is slightly different than one in your packet. I have recently met with one of the neighboring property owners, and we've made an agreement to purchase, which we think is integral to our site plan here, which is happening with Dr. and Mrs. Tenolia. But essentially the same layout as you have. 896 beds, which is similar to what was in the past. Several things here that are significantly different than things that you've seen in the past, and problems that I had heard with the previous development proposals. One was, the previous development had extensive use of retaining walls. When I looked at it myself, I saw 4,500 lineal feet of retaining walls. And to me, I interpret that oftentimes as not working within the grading that is reasonably achievable. So our take on this would eliminate virtually all of that. We have a couple of locations where we have some retaining walls, I think this front corner here by our front drive. That, of course, allows us to have a site that is flatter. And this entire portion here, which is probably 20-some acres, is all handicap accessible. We think it improves the mobility and the function of the site plan. In this plan, we have recognized the existence of Coates Run in the front, and then also this stream bed in the back. And we have established a 50-foot no-build-zone barrier. We think this is a good thing for any development, but that was not previously shown. In fact, previously planned, that we had showed some fill in what was, from our viewpoint, a stream area, which we didn't quite understand. So we have established these buffers, and then we will begin our grading outside of those buffers. From a civil engineering standpoint, we saw a plan that had previously, literally thousands of feet of underground detention, and we have chosen not to pursue that avenue of development. So we have recognized and shown retention ponds, that's something that can serve both the function of civil engineering and retention requirements, but also can serve as a visual amenity if they're done properly, so that you have a pond or a water feature that you drive by. And we've had a lot of good luck with this in the past, and would continue to pursue that here. On Ryan's plan here, we have located, by an asterisk in the back here, several other areas where we can use additional retention ponds, and we will pursue those and the need for those if we're allowed to proceed through the final engineering. We've also, along Richland Avenue here, we're crossing the stream, and we would intend to create some frontage here and redevelop that Richland Avenue corridor, hopefully consistent with the vision that Athens has for streetscape and acknowledging some of the existing structures that you have here. We think that the University Inn is an attractive building. There are some architectural elements here that we think are nice elements of the city, and we would want to acknowledge those. And our vision is that when you drive along Richland Avenue, that you can look up at this project, and you have a very attractive visual corridor. I'd like to show you some images that I, we have, that are things that we would like to incorporate into the project. First of all, you have the ridges, which is an historic element, and some of the Georgian features, of course, those are very ornate towers. But we think that there are some architectural elements that we can pull out of these, this building, these structures. What we'd like to do is create a visual corridor from Richland Avenue up to the project. There is a grade change from Richland Avenue up to this tower here. And if we can pull it off, it should be something that is very attractive. Heard some concerns about other properties that were not landscaped properly, and some of the disappointments of previous developments in the past, and we want to have a departure from that. So I wanted to give you some images of what this can be. This happens to be, I don't know if you folks can see it from the, but there are some grade changes here along this ridge, and we've drawn in some trees that would draw your eye up to what will be our clubhouse feature. But this is an example of how something like that can be accomplished just with grading and with, this doesn't even have any trees in it, just through simple grading and visually, we think this is something that we would love to pursue. That happens to be a plantation in southern United States, but we think that's terrific. Another thing we'd like to acknowledge is, and we've heard that there's been some existing Indian mounds that are on this site, I believe they've been excavated, and there's not much left. I've seen them and looked at them, walked the site. It was suggested to us that maybe we could reconstruct those Indian mounds on the site somewhere. We thought that was a great idea. We've done a little bit of research on that, and we wanted to show just some ideas on how that could happen. And Ryan may have to help me with the details on this, but this is a landscaping mound, happens to be from, I believe it's called The Waves. I'm not sure we would do something this massive, but it's an example of landscaping and mounding. And this happens to be designed by Maya Lynn, who I know did some work for you folks here on another project. But this is just an idea on how we can do some landscaping and acknowledge some of the things you have in the past and keep in the future developments. We also have, this site shows the existence of our community facility, which would be fairly extensive with an outdoor pool and leasing and clubhouse management facilities would be there. Our hope is to build a facility that would be very much of an attraction to the residents that live here with us. We have, in the past, done a very good job of that. We've included things like movie theaters, of course, exercise facilities. Those are common things, but it's sort of how you pull it off, and we have had some good success with that in Columbus and other student communities. This site has some commercial buildings up front, they're nondescript at this point, but we know that there's a demand for some food service companies. And as we got further into this, we would work with you folks in the development of that. We also have established a commercial site here, and Ryan has shown this just with an arrow, that creates a seven-acre, six- or seven-acre commercial site, which could be potentially used as a hotel, assisted living, or several other uses that fall within your codes.
If I can, yes. At this point, it's, he calls it a commercial site, but under the R3 zoning code, there are certain viable uses, which multifamily is one. Then there are some conditional uses, which would be more of that convenience retail that's related to the multifamily use of the remainder of the site. But there are also other conditional uses, such as the hotel motel, that fall under the R3 zoning, so it wouldn't be a rezoning of that piece of property. It would be to allow those conditional uses through the PUD process to be on that little six-acre piece up in the front. So it's not a rezoning, it's just within the overlay, and if we can get the conditional uses approved.
Yes, thank you, Brian. This is in no particular order, but this, we looked at the ridges, and our hope is that this feature right here is going to have some resemblance to something that we've done here, which was up, this is up in Columbus where we created, I'll call it an identification tower, which helps to, it's a very handsome structure that we have. This happens to be black slate and gold leaf lettering. But we would probably do a study of some of the architectural elements here and hope that, again, your eye would be drawn up to something that would be at the top of the hill and resemble this kind of structure. From an engineering side, we have had some preliminary discussions about the site. In Athens, there is existing soil conditions, which we call slip-prone soils. This is structurally unsound for buildings. We would intend to remediate that through the cuts and fills on this site. The Greenbrier subdivision next door has some homes that have slipped themselves, and so in order to do that, we would need to undercut and move soil on the site. We think that the way that we have this planned is a good one. We like the way that the entry drive comes in off of Richland and has a slow and gradual curve that works with the hillside, we think, better than things that we've seen in the past. We have designed a road that can handle stacking of traffic so that when people are exiting the site, they can stack and make their turns onto Richland Avenue. We have not shown a direct access to Dairy Lane on this site plan, and we're open to your input on that. We've heard mixed reviews on whether we need to tie in there or not, and we know that in the past, the tie-in was for emergency use only. We are capable and willing to do that if you folks so desire. We have investigated on a preliminary basis water capacity. We've had some discussions with your utility officials on that, and we feel that the waterline, a waterline extension would be the most probable solution for this site. And that's something that we will work out with you folks. If it's consistent with proposals that have been made in the past, which we think we can equal or improve upon, it would allow the city to have a waterline extension that would improve water pressures to the area. It would allow the city to eliminate two booster pump stations and save you a substantial amount of money. We also have investigated the sanitary sewer situation, and we understand that the Richland Avenue sanitary is at capacity. We have the ability to tie in elsewhere, but we are going to investigate the possibility of improving the Richland Avenue sewer and oversizing it, so that we don't have to put a lift station in for this proposed use there. It may cost us more, but we think that that probably would be a good, better long-term solution for you folks, and might also solve some problems. I'm sure there's lots more, but that's all I can think of at the moment.
I can't see from here, what's, what is that up at the top? But come right down, bring your finger down, what's that, is that a building?
Yes, and that's just a concept. It was, that happens to be an assisted living center concept. It's a building that Ryan built elsewhere, and so I said to Ryan, let's see if that will work on this site. And I believe that's a 125-bed facility. And that's all it is, is a concept.
Right now, it's more for illustrative purposes, just so everybody can visualize what might go on that front piece of property.
It isn't on this plan, so that's why they don't know.
Yes, yes.
We're not trying to get that little piece of property, just the uses it could have.
Yes.
It's more marketable. I guess from my standpoint, when we took a look at the plan that is currently approved through the preliminary development, it isolates all the multifamily development back here on the back of the hillside. It, I think severely covers that stream and impacts the stream in a detrimental way. And it had several retaining walls up on the site. And I'm not saying that we're not lowering the top of the hillside anymore, or less than they are. I think that's probably the appropriate use on this piece of property. Right now, the carriage hill to the south of us, right now their buildings are sitting down, this comes up about 25 feet from the ground level of their buildings up to the top of the hill. And it would be much the same in that circumstance. One thing that I'm very glad to hear is that Rick actually had good luck over here with the Tenovillas. Because if we didn't get this piece of property, then we did have a retaining wall there that was about 25 or 30 feet tall, and in my mind, would not look good at all, and it's not the best thing. So the idea is, we're still depressing the top of this hill a little bit, and that is somewhat driven by ADA accessibility throughout the project and getting accessible routes from the furthest buildings over to the clubhouse area. And it's also, I think it's driven by the soils that are out there today. Those soils need to be picked up, remediated, and then put back down to make them structural to hold the capacity of the buildings. The other thing that we did, besides that, we, I think we used a little bit more of what the land, this piece of property will allow as far as density. We kept the stream corridors, we tried not to touch them. What we did is, we started with a 50-foot buffer from the top of bank, and then we started our grading from there up. So that would allow us to save all the trees from that, I'm not going to say all the trees, most of the trees from that 50 foot up. The idea is, that would be the toe of the slope, you wouldn't have to touch anything to the other side, we could put the construction fence in, and then start our grading up to the top of the hill. So we did that on both pieces. And then the third thing that I think is very important is the Richland Avenue and the public view into the property. As you drive down Richland Avenue right now, it's, I wouldn't say it has a cohesive feel. There's a lot of single-family houses that have been converted into offices, professional office, some commercial uses in them. There's a lot of out parcels, convenience stores. The project across the street, you can see into their project, and it's almost like they turned their back on the public specter. They have one building that's sitting up at the top. I wouldn't say it's the most attractive view. Our idea is to create more of this linear park through this conservation zone from our entrance to the south, and then to the north where we are going to have to impact the stream with bridges and--
Culver, yeah.
Culver, sorry, Culver. They could look like a bridge. It's already cleared in that area anyway, and there's void of vegetation. We would be able to come in and do some sort of a commercial use that fronts the stream and create like a little boardwalk river view, you know, the restaurant or whatever the use may be, sitting along the creek edge and actually address the creek, use that as the front door, and then it would come in and be more of the view into the project. So I really think, one thing that Edwards is very good about doing in all their projects, is they create this front door that gives them an identity, but it also gives something for the community-- for the community to grab hold of. Similar to the tower at Central Park that he showed, or the linear park at Hayden Run with the horses in it and the fence. It's just something that everybody in the community actually associates with and they know exactly where it is in the city. I think it does a lot of things for both parties.
Yeah, the previous plan didn't... I believe it was a fallacy that this component here was excluded from the development. And we just couldn't understand why they wouldn't be worked together. Well, we understand financially why, but we, the grading and the smoothing out and working this site as one, we think is critical to having it be smooth and so makes it softer and makes it flow with the topography more naturally, I think.
Just one thing, you keep changing your mind in this thing, whether it's Creek or Run.
It's supposed to be Run.
You know, go through us as a summit at Coach Creek and then freeze and it's...
That's all Ryan.
The other thing on the preliminary development plan, that is somewhat of a crafty preliminary development plan, we're really here today for pre-application to get the ball rolling. We realize that everybody, it seems like everybody in the city is very familiar with this site and different proposals in the past, so it allowed us to kind of get a lot of information down early and come into the pre-application.
I'd forget the rebuilding of Indian Mount if I were you.
Well, they could put something there.
They could put, you could put.
You could add some kind of a signage or some even historic marker on there, but I
wouldn't try to reproduce them.
It's been a request.
Johnny Nation doesn't look kindly on that, don't they? I was told best not to.
We weren't trying to get into political environment, it was a request that we would embrace in a light-natured fashion, but maybe we can't pull it off.
Does anybody have a question?
I've got a question.
She has a question.
Of course. I would hope that you would go ahead and plan on having that emergency entrance onto Dairy Lane and have it gated, thing that could be used just for emergencies.
We'd be happy to do that.
Because emergency vehicles can come in and they could circle around through the parking lot to get back out, but it might be that they would need a faster exit.
We're trying to explore some opportunities or alternatives there. We haven't met with cheap trucks yet, honestly. We think there's a couple of different ways that we might be able to get access in from the south. Really what we're trying to do is not impact all the vegetation.
Right.
That's already down there along Dairy Lane and try to keep that as rural as we can. I think we do have a couple alternatives though that might get us to the south, which is whatever happens to the OU property. We have a great point of access here where we're already existing grades. And then the other thought might be is if we can get a second access through the two parking lots, for mercy only.
Yeah.
Really, they just, they're concerned about, you know, what if this is blocked from there to there? So I think we have a couple things to discuss with them on that.
My next question is, with the site preparation that you're talking about, would you have to remove any dirt from the site and put it someplace else, or would you be retooling it and using it on the site somewhere?
We're going to, we would, we have an excess of soil and we intend to work with OU, which was proposed in the past to move some soil over there. We haven't approached them, our group has not, but we know that there was a past agreement that a building pad would be built for them. We think that's good for them. Our proposal, and it really is preliminary, that we could provide some water service to them, which was not previously done, really could do some good things for them and the development of that property. So that would, we hope be a win-win for them and allow us to keep dirt on site so that we, we don't intend to be hauling anything off.
What grade road do you think you might have down to Richland Avenue for that main road?
The grade on the road? Right now it's a 12%, which is the maximum allowed through the hillside regulations.
And, let's see, how many beds and how many parking spaces are we talking about?
Right now, we have the same, we have 896 beds, which is in accordance with the approved plan. Parking spaces, right now we're showing .95 per bed. We can get one space per bed, we just don't know that it's a necessity. And of course, every time you put more parking on it, it just means that you have to do a little bit of grading or shifting the trees and whatnot to make that parking lot a little bit bigger.
And these are going to be three-bedroom, four-bedroom, two-bedroom?
It'll be a mix, primarily threes and fours, but there will be some ones and twos. Our past dialogue was that there was some demand for ones, ones and twos, and so we'll have some of those.
And are you planning to have them furnished?
Yes, absolutely.
I think that takes care of my questions.
Anybody else?
Oh, mine was, an addition to the text list, I guess, was transportation's sort of pattern of what, you know, could potentially be done there. Because if you've got that many people that aren't going to be allowed to park at the university, we're going to have to try to either by pedestrian, by bus, by somehow, how do they get to the university?
Yes.
So we're out to think about that and when you start going through your concepts there.
Yes, yes. We know that there's some opportunities available that we'll work with you folks to find out which is, which is the best for both of us in terms of shuttle service. So we'll work through that with you.
Yeah, and I don't know, Ryan, if you have the capability with GIS as to, as you develop this, do like almost like a 3D model on GIS?
We talked about doing that, just putting together something to help us on maybe even setting it into photographs and visualizing it. It just helps.
I know some of the presentations I've seen by GIS conferences and such have been pretty impressive, I don't know if you have that capability or not. But it does help us because when we start talking about these, we are talking about elevations, we're talking about changes of elevation. And sometimes you get surprised as to what you thought you heard you say versus what we see in product level, let's put it that way. So the more things we can have so that we can really visualize it, it does help us. And of course, I, you know, again, as we talked before, onsite management and all those good kind of things, I think are necessary for the size of development.
Yes, pardon me for, yes, we would have our own facilities and onsite management and self-contained community somewhat.
If I understand your overall proposal here, you're doing the total site of roughly 34, 35 acres.
Yes.
Instead of the 21 or 22.
Correct.
Changes some of the dynamics, but it also then, what you're proposing right now, absent someone coming forth and wanting to sign some agreement with you to do one or two or three things commercially, is just to have a couple of areas that are designated for these types of commercial development.
Yes.
If I understand.
Yes.
And anybody else?
Could you point out where the Tenolias?
Sure.
There you could have lost your partner. Oh, there.
Triangular, it's actually too lost that.
Works better for all of us.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I assume there are questions.
Okay, then we'll go on to the, I'm not asking anybody out there because there'll be chances, this is just preliminary discussion. Preliminary. Preliminary, preliminary, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so 610 Landmark Properties Information. Here, this is it. Let's look at this. We got one good.
I'll see the books.
Oh, it's this one here.
Yes.
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 Ready?
I was waiting for you to start.
John Ballantor here, and I think that there's a few handouts there in front of you to be reviewed. I'd like to describe what the thought process is here for what we're going now. I believe that the last meeting, one of the primary requests from the commission was to have some concept of what the building is going to look like. And we have generated this elevation essentially that would be on the Stimson Avenue side, looking from Stimson Avenue onto the property. I don't know if you have a site plan in front of you, but I think I have one.
Yeah, we have, it's in here.
This would be this elevation of this building, Stimson Avenue. Pretty much, it's a conceptual elevation showing, I think, some of the intended materials are possibly, mainly, it would be a mixture of brick and some other type of material. We haven't really discussed yet, but either a stucco, drive-it type material or some kind of a hardboard, we're not sure yet. But the idea is to try to make it fit into the neighborhood and make the building, break it up enough that it actually hopefully assumes some of the scale of adjacent structures that are on Stimson Avenue. Now, there's two drawings that you have in front of you. One of them's in color and one of them is in black and white. And the, another issue that obviously needs to be considered is the amount of commercial development that is required by code on Stimson Avenue. The color drawing shows a little more than 50% of the building. I think that there's a written description that gives you more specific dimensions. Would be allocated on the first floor to commercial. Stimson Avenue is rather steep coming off of West State Street at that particular location. I've got a little diagram showing the contours and how they work here. And in this concept that we were doing, I still kept residential on the higher elevation and on the more lower, farther away from West State Street, actually, I'm sorry, yes, added, East State Street, added where the commercial would be. Closer to Ambassador Laundry and more towards grade elevation, easier to get to grade elevation. And as you can see, I have sort of a transition in elevation that occurs between the residential and the commercial section of that property. And now, you know, there's other things that make this not such a bad idea, I think, and that right around the corner on State Street are, because they are not in the same zone, there are residential structures right across the street, residential apartment building from the old church, the SAE house, there's apartments on, going on up to uptown area. So this is sort of, I would consider, sort of a transition period or spacer between the B3 and the R3. So I don't think it's totally out of character to allow this to happen. I know this is an accident for a variance from the letter of the code, but in reviewing this site, it makes sense, I think, to allow this to happen at this location. Coming off of East State Street or State Street, it's primarily, I think, and I do, I know this for a fact, is a dangerous intersection, especially because it's downhill coming off of the, coming off of the red light there and also making that quick turn. When I was in college years ago, I was walking right down that street to go to the liquor store and, it's a long time ago.
I know exactly where it was.
And this is a true story. And see, these things I'm saying aren't necessarily, I mean, I'm not just trying to make this thing up or anything, it's true. I, there is a car almost stopped just before Ambassador Laundry, another car just smashed right into the back of it and a little baby fell out in the street right in front of me. I mean, it was traumatic experience to see all that. And then I had to help get the baby to the hospital, but it, and I don't know if they've had a record of accidents that have occurred over there, but by, I think that since Bob's is way off the road and we're talking about coming in closer to developing on the road, it'll be more difficult if traffic is diverted or if there's more commercial activities occurring that close to that particular intersection. And that's, that's pretty much, I think, the contours that are existing right there and the situations that revolve around that intersection are the reasons that we're asking for that variance. Now, the black and white drawing actually depicts that whole section also being commercial, at the upper level as well. It'll be more difficult to get access to, I think, because we, of the, just the slope that we're having to deal with along Stimson Avenue at that specific, at that location, because it's going down so quickly. But in any case, I've tried to indicate that it's possible that it can happen. I've also got some photographs here that you can just look at if you want, just showing And just from different angles and views of what it's actually like there. The building on the corner is very close, it's, there's only a sidewalk away from the street when you're making a turn from East State Street onto Stimson Avenue. So you don't get any view down the street of where you're going anyway. And that particular moment, there wasn't a whole lot of traffic there, but in other times of the day, it does become very congested with traffic and it's these reasons that we feel that we should be granted some consideration from the letter of the law.
John, I've got a conceptual problem with this, I think. If you look at the ground plan.
Okay.
And then look at the colored.
Right.
Rendering, you've got, this building in the colored one is sitting forward, but here it's sitting back.
It is, this is forward.
Is that what I mean?
This is forward here, that's back. This is supposed to be.
Okay, show me where that is on this.
This is right there. And now, I put a line here, I changed the material line, but this plane is pretty much the same, so you get the here.
But the roof is different.
It's, I know, it's a dormer, like a big dormer coming in off of that roof.
Okay, so that...
And I've also changed the floor elevations here. These floor elevations are higher, or, I'm sorry, these drop down, these elevations are higher because I'm still parking underneath this section. I can't park underneath here now because I want to be, I want to be down on the street level.
Right.
So I couldn't park underneath this portion of the building. This line.
But then you're saying this is over here?
No, I've got a, this isn't quite exactly right. I've got a dormer here, which is this one.
Okay.
Okay, then this comes across to this point and that is that line right there, transition, it's actually coming forward. And this becomes a grassy sort of...
What's coming, this is coming forward.
This piece right here.
This?
This piece.
That whole building.
This piece right here, and then this whole thing comes forward with it, over to here.
And then it comes forward more.
Then it comes forward again and again, so it's stepping forward still.
Okay. In the parking here, where is the parking, on this row here that you can see here?
I'm sorry.
Or is down... Or is down, well, you say you're having parking.
Parking underneath here, yes.
Yeah, well, but underneath.
Is it this level?
Is it this level?
Yes. No, 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 this is apartment level.
Yeah, that's what I.
So there are three, three stories of apartments and a fourth.
Parking underneath, yes.
Underneath.
And on this section of the building, it's just three stories only with commercial on the first floor.
And this is drive-in parking, so it's at ground level.
Underneath it, behind it.
Two, three, four.
Yeah, but I mean, but I mean, you're driving in.
Yeah, that's a loft.
At ground level from here.
Yes, yes.
And you're not going, you're not excavating.
Because we're going down the hill, you go down the hill, then you come around, and this will be cut out, then you can get in underneath this section right there.
Okay, okay. So that means that there are two entrances to this parking area.
Excuse me?
There are two entrances then to this parking area.
Yes.
Okay, what have we done about this?
I'm, oh, I'm going to connect that, but I just haven't done that. I didn't do that. I'm just going to connect these right through there.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that's.
Because that was one of the.
You were, I remember you brought that up, and I'm sorry, I forgot to make that change.
John, is this, I can't know when this site plan was from. Is this current?
This is current, right here.
That's current.
That's what this is.
Yeah.
It's got a date on it.
This one stayed on. This got cut off, it looks like. It's the same one.
It's the same one.
I colored these up the last time. You probably have a record somewhere.
I take them in the, in this thing here somewhere.
I haven't changed the site plan at all.
Okay, it's in this, we haven't.
Site plan has not changed.
Okay, because we talked about this.
Yeah, that, that's on too, in this room. That's the auxiliary parking, the turnoffs that I have on Palmer Street, additional parking off.
Well, just seeing the bins in this building, I don't, I can't relate it to this later.
Well, that's what she's having.
That's why I brought my bag.
It looks flat, but it isn't flat.
Well, because it's an elevation. I didn't really put shadows on it.
Yeah, shadows.
Right.
This point here comes forward, comes over here, comes forward, forward again, that little tower thing right there.
It's this, I know, but that, yeah, okay.
Well, that takes a lot of your parking away, doesn't it?
Takes, it takes the parking out from underneath this building right here.
So that changes how much parking you have.
I'm going to let somebody else talk about it.
You are the parking person?
I don't know, do you have another parking?
Yeah, it's in there.
You know, we, we have to, you know, I think that it takes parking away from this particular site, yes. But I think we need to sort of firm up that, okay, the plan looks like it's okay, and then deal with the parking best we can to make things work. You know, we will make the parking work to what you're discussing.
Tell us once again, how many beds?
How many beds in there? We still don't have a definitive number yet. I believe we had a range that we gave earlier.
What's the highest?
Okay.
What's the lowest you can get by? You can still make it. Hundred.
I don't think, I think that, I don't have those numbers in front of me, and I don't want to say blurt out something here with that.
I'm not going to learn from a great magic number, but certainly we're going to, unless we're out, and our goal, we would like to have 375. We probably can live with 350, but much lower than that, I don't know that we can. I believe we have, from the numbers I'm hearing, we, to be real straightforward, we're probably, from one to one, we're probably 100, in the neighborhood of 100 parking spaces short. Now, if you're going to, now, there are some possibilities. We've been all over the neighborhood. If you're, are going to insist, and I don't know where we're going to reach that point where we have to have, we're still contending, that we don't need, if we, if we have 375 bedrooms, we feel we do not need 375 parking spots. However, if you're, if you insist, we'll somehow, some way get them. Now, I do want to mention to you, I don't know that this means a thing to you, but we did, did some more checking, and we've concluded that the building I have at 27, the old hotel, about, we're about a third of the people that rent from us in that building, we provide, we have parking for. And I still contend, and there was some discussion about this, we're charging $30 a month for uptown parking, and if anyone can find it for any less expensive, I have it. The only place that we found is less expensive is the fairgrounds. Our billing at 85, or the billing on North Court, is about a 55% ratio. 55% of the students have parking from us. We have onsite parking, and then we have only a few use our parking lot at 56 West Carpenter. Now, that space, which we've mentioned before, that lot is 62 spaces. It's not within, I haven't measured it, and we all know that it's not within 300 feet of the landmark property. However, it is uptown parking, it's paved, we could use that if we have to, we can, again, if, we're still contending or hoping that you don't insist, we have one parking spot per bedroom. But basically, that's, that's where we are at this point. And another thing, if we, well, we'll get, I'd say, well, the next suggestion I was going to have, I'll let it go to later, but again, I don't know, I don't even know how to, I'm going to ask how we can deal with this. Can, I mean, do you decide that, you know, we're sorry, this is the way you have to have, or, I don't know.
I think so.
Is that it, Joanne?
We're the first one.
We're the first ones.
We're the first one to do that. Council's after us.
All right.
So we may say it's okay, but you're not going to, you may not be able to. When you, the people who live in here, if this were built and they lived in here and they had this parking spot, do you have to pay extra when you live in there to park there?
On this, on this building? I don't know. I mean, we, we do it, I mean, in our, in our buildings, we do charge $90 a quarter for parking.
If you live right on the spot to do, so the people going off wouldn't have to.
And I mean, it doesn't matter, we can do it either way.
I mean, you're off the price anyway, so, I mean, you put it in there.
We include it, however, but that's why, we keep, try to keep our prices low and then add the extras if they choose to pay anything.
Do you use hang tags, or how do you?
We use hang tags, and we do, we have to, we have to police it, and we do. Because if we did, the people that are supposed to be there would never get a spot. So yes, we have a towing company and they do a pretty good job.
All your data, though, Les, is really based upon what you're renting, and we really don't have any way of knowing of the people that rent the apartments from you, do they have cars here?
Right.
And I have no way of knowing that, and you don't either.
I agree with you. All we know, they're not renting from us.
Right, and you make the supposition that your rates are low enough for your people that are tenants, that if they're renting parking at all, they're renting it here. The question from the near neighborhoods come, well, are they renting parking at all? Are they just hopping around the neighborhoods?
And I agree with you, however, for instance, the North Court, that property at North Court, which we say is about 55%, you could almost throw a baseball from that location to the parking lot. If, I can't imagine a closer spot to park and why in the world they would choose one further away for, and as I say, for, now, if we had prices of, what, $100, $50 a month or 150, like a few of the parking lots, I could understand, but I really, I haven't found anyone who was less expensive than $90 a quarter.
But Joanne doesn't charge anything for parking in front of her house.
Yeah, but they get ticketed, don't they, Joanne? So I don't think you encourage them to park in front of your house.
They throw things at my house, too.
But I agree, you're, you're right, and we haven't gone, I suppose we could, but we haven't.
Get some water system.
Okay, anybody else have any? Did anyone have anything they wanted to say? Anybody else have questions? All right. Oh, okay. Identify yourself.
I'm Anne Isaacs, and I live at Heritage Commons, 22 Kirk Street, right across from the old landmark building. And in our apartment building are 45 apartments, and they're all housed, we're all seniors. Forty-five isn't much compared to 375, but the noise and the pollution and the traffic, it's an annoyance for us. And right now, we have a lot of students in our neighborhood. We've kind of become part of the Palmer Street thing and the Mill Street thing, so we, not by choice, I might add. And so I just wanted you to keep us in mind, Les. We're not happy. You can understand. And as far as the cars are concerned, I've always thought there are 20,000 students and every one of them's got a car. When you try to find a parking place uptown, that's, that's what you think. So anyway, I just want you to know, we're still, we still got our eye on you guys.
Thank you. Okay, Scott.
I think we all have a spot, but we'll have this entered, she'll put it in a file with the.
Scott and Isley, and I live at 9691 Hooper Road. We're a neighbor down there at the bank. We also have a parking lot that we're talking to, Les and Brent about, if they need space that we might enter into an agreement to do so. We think it's a good idea to develop the site, especially in accordance with what our comprehensive plan is speaking about. If you look at that comprehensive plan, they talk about going to an R4, high-density zone. That site is the one that's picked for that zone, so we feel, you know, we want to utilize and use that property for what it was, what we as the planners felt that was used before that, so. And the 91 plan also speaks of high-density housing and those things, and we've always, we always recognize that this community, the second-largest business in this community is student housing. And I think as a city, we need to manage that, and this, by using the tactics that we have in the comprehensive plan, it makes sense to do that, so.
Thank you. We also had a letter from Ambassador Laundry in favor of the project. Okay, if there are any other questions, we really need to know how many people you're talking about, so. Somewhere between my 100 and your 375.
Joanne.
Yes, sir.
Since I was reading this comprehensive plan, again, the last week or so. Because that's a fluid right of our agenda, because we always talk about this high-density city R4. And it does say in the comprehensive plan that they want a new R4 zoning district to be applied to this area on Mill Street. But they want it to reflect the current allowable density in R3, which is 30 units per acre. And they're recommending in the R3s, we down and allow less than 30 per acre. So the 30 per acre is considered high-density, according to the comprehensive plan. So that's where we get into the numbers of units and the others. Well, I'm just saying what's, that's in the, that's what they wrote.
What's the acreage for this site?
Not quite four acres.
Find that building on the corner.
New to you.
No, no, oh, not the other way, on the corner. It used to be the Castler's Dairy. Then you could have some other place to park right over there, make a little park. Okay, I know you're not going to do that. All right, if there isn't anything else, we have another case.
Do we have to do anything?
I don't think so. This is an information thing, and I think they, right, they have to get their numbers Or is there something else? It said information, it didn't say your question. Landmark.
They were returning information to you requesting.
We asked about parking.
So we need to know the number of.
But you can't get.
We can't really do that without knowing the number of beds, can we?
I don't. I will.
He said 350 to 375.
Right. Do you know what the density of that is? With four acres, I mean, how do you count it by bed, by people?
By unit.
By unit.
How many people are in a unit?
So you're in a bedroom?
That's one of the things with, with the way the current code is written is.
1,250 square feet per unit, with no distinction between a.
There are different ways to look at density. You can look at area per person, or you can look at area per unit. Now, a unit can have one to five people in it. Currently, our code says 1,250 square feet per unit, but it doesn't say it's a one-bedroom unit or a five-bedroom unit. So for example, if somebody wants to do the math real quick, just let's say they're four bedrooms, divide that into 375, come up with that total number of units, multiply it by 1,250.
Just give it a.
See, okay.
I can't, I can't do it in my head, but that would.
Okay, give, do it again.
The number of units will probably be, just let's just say, whatever a multiple of four would be, around 375. So divide 375 by four.
It's a multiple of four.
Assuming the units are four-bedroom.
93.
93. 93 units times 1,250 square feet. And that will tell you what the square footage is, that would be minimum square footage required for 93 units.
But that would be the square footage of building, right?
Buildings.
It doesn't have anything to do with the square footage of the site.
No, that's lot area per dwelling unit.
Oh, okay.
And I think, as the mayor mentioned, in the comprehensive plan, they wanted to, I think that it's mentioned, that's a very low amount. That's what creates your, your density, is that low amount of land actually required for a unit. 1,200 square feet of land area per unit. And again, that doesn't, it doesn't then sort out, for example, are they single-story, two-story, three-story, eight-story? It's just, again, when you're talking about density, there's a lot of different ways to look at it. But the way the city code's written right now, it's 1,250 square feet of land area per unit. Now, that square footage number that you came up with, in order to turn that to acres, divide by 4,000, 42,560. 42,560 is the number of square feet in an acre. And they have four point, well, is it 4.1? I think it's right around four acres. So I guess, I guess back up a little bit. 42,560 times four acres, or the number four, will give you the total amount of square feet available. Then you're going to have to compare that square footage number in four acres to the total that you came up with, 93 times 1,250.
It's 43,056.
I just kind of knew that when we were talking, and I think that if an acre has 43,250 square feet.
42,560.
43, 43,560.
Excuse me, 43,560.
Well, I, 43,250. Times 3.8 acres.
So they've got it.
That's about 135,000. And that's above what the.
So they've got enough.
If you take 165,000 and divide it by 93, that'll actually tell you the area available per unit. And then you can take that number and compare it to 1,250.
I think you make it.
Anyway.
And again, you know, I just mentioned there are different ways to look at density, but.
So where 375, it's okay, according to all of this.
What did the actual area per unit come up to?
I didn't do actual area per unit. I came up to a total of 174,340 needed, I mean, 174,340.
Available.
Available, as opposed to 116,250 needed. needed. What you said, so there is enough.
Okay, so that one seventy-something, divided by ninety-three will tell you, it's going to be around eighteen hundred?
It's four hundred and thirty-eight feet. I just divided the one sixteen thousand five.
Ninety-three?
Yeah, that's four hundred and thirty-eight.
Something there's.
We need a count.
Right.
She's got a count.
It's going to end up being, should be a number over twelve.
One sixteen four. Divided by nine three.
Mm-hmm. I was close on my eighteen hundred estimate.
It's pretty close.
But we had a chart that somebody furnished us back in the mists of last spring, I guess, about how many units per acre, different apartment complexes around town.
Right. That was a comparison chart that I'd generated when Campus Edge was first proposed. It wasn't called Campus Edge then, but I, I do still have that chart.
Well, at that, we looked at that chart, thirty per acre, thirty units per acre was the highest, or thirty, whether it was bedrooms or what.
I had the chart broken out in number of buildings, number of bedrooms, number of units. I'd compared all of them.
Yeah, number of bedrooms that I was looking at. And the highest one that I recall was, maybe it was Lakeview, something like thirty per acre.
Right.
So. So, this is in the, in the same ballpark?
Yeah, Lakeview's a very large project, but it's really not a dense project if you look at area.
Right, yeah.
If you start looking at the number of people in a certain space, then it's, it is the densest. So, there's a lot of different ways to, to, to view density. And I can provide you with that chart again. When I go, when I go back to the office, I'll pull it up. Because I know it's been revised a little bit because it was something Mr. Doughty had used to compare all the projects in town compared to the different ones that he's proposed.
That would be useful to have.
I'm more concerned about the number of people you're jamming into a place rather than the building, because you can have one building and have a lot of people in them. And the people have to come out and walk. And this is what bothers me, that we jam too many people into an area because you can stack them up.
Well, at, you know, obviously, for example, let's just say the twenty-one acre, let's just say twenty-one acres at the Campus Edge, divide that by eight ninety-six. Actually, this last proposal was even larger than that. You can see area per person. You could do that. So, obviously, this one's going to be much more dense than that one by comparison, because we're talking almost four hundred people, or just about half, a little less than half the amount on a people, four, eight, twelve, you know, on about, what, an eighth of the, sixth of the area? Well, I wasn't good at math in my head. I'm a visual person, but I'm not good with math in my head. But it's probably six times more dense person per area. And Campus Edge, as I recall, falls about in the middle of the chart for density or area per person. But see, there are other projects. I mean, if you start thinking, it's got College Park on there, if you, you know, just visualize College Park, University Commons, University Courtyard, you know, it's kind of, it's a lot of people, fairly wide open. So, you really, the projects are just different, the way you look at them. And I can provide you with that chart, because it does do a very good job of drawing out all those individual categories.
Well, that would be helpful to have, just for future reverence, I think, too. I assume if we're not going to give preliminary approval today, that we need to say what we, what else we want.
I mean, that's up to, to you people, though, if you want to give it, it's not up to me.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is I'm not adverse to preliminary approval, because it's a concept we want on this site, housing, and we want some retail. Yes, there's a lot of details to work out. But we don't, shouldn't be at final approval, we're under final approval. That's when the final, you know, what I think the owners of the property need to know is that, does the planning commission really believe this is appropriate for rental housing and some commercial units with, before they spend more time, energy, and dollars further developing the plan, so that we can get to, okay, there's exactly so many, and this is the calculation, and this is how it's going to flow and work and everything like that. And so, for that reason, I would recommend preliminary approval.
Second.
Is there any discretion? All in favor, say aye. I vote no. I never vote. I don't believe in that. We should approach it that way, because it makes you have more information for preliminary plan, not just a concept. But you've got your vote, it's approved. Okay, so any other, we don't have anything else to do on that. I don't believe. Oh, six fourteen, First Street, Plain, Steven Abdella, minor lot split, with variance. Who voted what? Huh? Who voted what? They all voted yes, but I voted no. Everybody was yes, you were no.
No, I don't. I gave them to town.
What do you need?
Go ahead.
That one, okay.
You don't have any way in the minutes to indicate a degree of happiness with the vote, do you? I voted, but.
No, no, I just have to list. But there was one.
I think you need to have this. I'll leave this here. I'll put that with your. Okay. Go ahead.
I had recently spoken with Mr. Steven Abdella about a minor lot split that required a variance. We spoke probably a month, month and a half ago, and he had planned a vacation around, assuming the meeting was last week, and then it got changed. So, you don't have to make a decision today. He's not here today, but.
I thought he was here.
All right.
I saw you over there.
His brother is here then, I guess, because I didn't know that anybody was going to be here. So, now I'm glad that I did get you this more specific detail. I did a real quick sketch last Friday, really, if you would, just throw that in the way, and look at the one that has the memo cover letter on it. The proposal, if you look on the first page, one I've marked as Exhibit A, is a survey of three parcels of land that were owned by Mr. Abdella. The larger parcel identified as almost three acres, two point nine nine, is where you've recently seen a proposal for Castle Pines. And just some information on that, too. Mr. Ferian will be back with a revised, scaled-down Castle Pines, for you to look at. I spoke with him today. But anyway, the three-acre site, that's where Castle Pines was proposed. Mr. Abdella's house is on the smaller lot. And then that L-shaped lot that he has right there is a lot that's available for development. If you look at the next page, it's a sketch that I did, rather than have him actually do a survey prior to any review. It's a blown-up, I've called that B. It's a blow-up of that L-shaped lot with what he proposes to do. What he wants to do is split off a lot in the back. And instead of having public road frontage, and that's where the, where one of the problems lies, is he would prefer to have a twenty-foot easement that would get you from First Street back to that lot in the back. And then on the, on the first sheet, on the memo, what I did was, the following variances are necessary for the proposed fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty point five square foot lot. And the lot area's just about five thousand square feet less than what's required. Twenty thousand square feet is the minimum lot size now that can be permitted. That's a recent change in the subdivision regs based on availability of water, sewer, and curb and gutter. So, when you have curb and gutter, you can go just a little over nine thousand square feet. No curb and gutter, it jumps up to twenty thousand. No curb and gutter, no sewer, water only, which is quite common outside the city, that's one acre minimum. So, the availa, the availability of water and sewer there drives that twenty thousand square foot number. So, that's lot area is a variance that's necessary. And then, as I mentioned, the second variance that might be, that is necessary, is to permit a lot with no road frontage, where ninety feet is required minimum. And then that's in a scenario, again, with water, sewer, no curb and gutter. So, I, I'd thought, well, he must be on vacation yet, so, so, but I didn't know his brother would be here. I guess, probably fortunate that I did get it on the agenda.
I have a question for you, Steve, because what, what you're saying is there's currently an L-shaped lot that's what, a hundred and five feet of lot, of frontage on First?
Yeah, Exhibit A.
Goes back two hundred and twenty-seven, seventy-seven feet, and then goes on behind the other lot.
Right.
And you're just paring off. When you cut that twenty-foot easement off, how do you consider that for lot frontage of the residual? Does that go to eighty-five? Because they've already got an easement devoted to the other parcel. Would it technically meet the ninety-foot requirement?
I've never had occasion to eliminate road frontage based on an easement, because, for example, if that were the case, then that twenty feet, then, I suppose, could be the frontage for the lot in the back. But the proposal is not to actually make it part of that land. It's, it's just a condition attached to other land for use in the back. I mean, there, I guess they could just as easily say that they wanted a small strip. They could put a small strip twenty feet wide all the way out to the street. If that were the case, you're correct, then that other lot would need a variance, because you're going to take that one oh five, and you're going to take it down to eighty-five, which is five feet too narrow. So, this proposal is just for an easement, rather than to have that long, skinny piece of land actually go back and attach to the parcel in the back.
Well, it also looked like it was getting close to the twenty thousand square feet, because if you were at eighty-five by two oh three.
Okay.
You wouldn't have twenty thousand square feet with it. I mean, I don't understand why do a twenty-foot easement, rather than just making it a weird lot. Because when you give the easement for the twenty feet, it's a permanent easement, right? I think your statement there was that they had to maintain a roadway home, service to the.
There is also attached to the pack of information, a letter from Mr. Abdella. That's, this is not me. This is Mr. Abdella, wrote this. And says he wants to build self-storage units on the lot. And you don't have the pink, the highlighted documents.
No, but what I'm saying is what Mr. Abdella is proposing in here, it's great when you own all three lots. But we've got to put conditions on there and say, what if three different people own three lots?
Right.
You know, because somewhere along the line, that's going to happen. And so, that's why, when we look at these, I really want us to be able to say, why do we want an easement with, you know, because to me, the person having, where the easement's going to, should have the responsibility to maintain it. You know, I mean, it's different. I mean, there's, it's, as I understand right now, that's vacant land?
Yes.
The two lot, he has, another house is on the third lot, right, or the proposed.
Yeah, right now, there's.
Right now, there's only two lots, right?
Correct.
And that's what I'm saying, is that, you know, to all intents and purposes, aren't we creating two non-conforming lots? You're giving away the twenty-foot easement.
Well, if he, if he, if he's building on this residual lot.
Or somebody might someday.
Somebody building on that residual lot, the twenty feet, does, does that, yeah, does that, or does that not affect any required setback from that lot line? Given there's no building or zoning review in the plains.
Yeah, I know that.
I don't, but again, the easement could be also used as a shared driveway.
Sure.
For the piece on the side. As I recall, too, and just kind of piggy, piggyback on what the mayor's saying, I did discuss this with Mr. Abdella, you know, that you could come in and ask for this, two variances for road. What I tried to do is minimize the variances. See, because then you probably would have been cutting, I think the other lot, then, in the front, would have needed frontage and area variances, if that.
That's, that's what I was seeing, too.
Yeah, if that easement strip came off. So.
But I didn't, what I didn't like was the statement in there that he would maintain because he owns all three. No, we got to tie it to whoever owns some lot.
Right. When I discuss, in the three-mile limit, when I discuss with applicants what the planning commission might like to see, I always tell them it should be similar to what the county requires, and that's easements of thirty feet at a minimum to one lot, fifty feet to two or more lots, if approved for variance, and also a maintenance agreement. What I have is, I have copies of the model maintenance agreements that the county uses, and I always give those to applicants, too. So, they always know upfront that that could be a condition, that before they get their final approval, they're actually going to have to show a draft maintenance agreement and a draft easement that would be recorded if approved. So, again, I was kind of, I didn't really know that a decision was going to be, might be made today, or may not be made. But this was the information that I had right now. And again, the reason that I didn't think there was going to be a presentation, the kinds of questions that you're asking about, why do you want to do it this way, could be answered by Mr. Abdella. But I guess his brother's here today to answer those questions. Sorry to put you on the.
I'm not exactly sure. Your question is, right, Robert B. I guess the question is.
You identify yourselves.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm Mark Abdella, and that is my brother. And he contacted me to be here today on his behalf, since he is on vacation. But I guess your question is, as opposed to being an easement, to actually make that an L-shaped lot? Is that what you're asking?
Well, that, well, that was just the first question in respect to Mr. Abdella, that there are a couple of concerns here. One is if you're doing storage, if your brother wants to do storage buildings back there, that usually means trucks are going to be delivering something. A ten-foot wide on each side, if somebody's going in and somebody's going out, isn't wide enough, quite honestly.
Correct. I would say so.
The county standard, I think you should very strongly think about, which is thirty feet. The second question that I really had then was, we need to tie that to whomever's really using. If it's an easement, it needs to be tied then, that that property owner would own it. Because otherwise, you're going to have to determine that at some.
Isn't that automatic, that if you have an easement across to a piece of property, certainly, nobody's going to maintain you a road if they've given you an easement? I, I just would think that that's, that's a given.
But it eliminates any question about it. Because what happens then is if, and that's another thing, if that other vacant lot gets sold, what if that person wants to use the easement? In order to say, I'm going to design my house, so that I want to come down that easement to the storage thing, and then pull in and go into my garage. Well, then you need a shared easement. So, I mean, part of it's got to, you got to look at, okay, I got three, I want three pieces of parcels where I have two. What do I really want on all three, and what rights do I want to give to those two? And that's really what the question is.
Certainly.
I don't think it's one you can answer. But I think if we could establish that, it would make the decision process for us a lot easier. Yeah, I don't mind, I mean, I, I think, as I look at the plains, there's lots of acres, lots of lots under twenty thousand square feet.
Certainly.
So, you know, being under twenty thousand square feet doesn't bother me.
Right. I mean, making that, just describing it as a non-shared easement, would it still need, opened up to a thirty-foot, you know, just state, going ahead and stating it as this is not a shared easement, this easement has been put on there, period, for this piece of property, for access.
The reason I'm thinking of the wider than twenty feet, and it's subject to some debate, is usually the standard in, in the county, I think, is at least a twenty-two foot street, road, whatever you want to call it. street, road, whatever you want to call it, so it's at least 11 feet. I think that's minimum. And then usually you're thinking about, oh, where am I going to put any utilities back to this place?
Right.
Well, you don't want to do it in the road because every time you got to change, do, and you got to tear up the road. So that's why they get to the 30 feet. Because if you use 22 to 24 for the actual road surface and then use the other six feet, want three on each side for utility purposes, because right now, that's a storage building. I don't know who wants to build a house there 50 years from now.
I agree.
And how are they going to get water and sewer back if they got a 20-foot easement?
Okay.
And, and the easement would really need to say, what all, are you granting the easement for? Just egress and ingress or water?
Why is it a blanket easement that they can use for utilities and...
And then if you're going to do it for everything, why not just make it a non-conforming lot and do it? Because, you know, and so those are the questions that run through my mind.
Okay.
Just to give him some...
So just so I know what that, for sure, that you're asking for, does that then make the existing lot non-conforming?
I'll have to go back and figure that out.
If you put that with the other than the existing lot, would be non-conforming, it looks like. Especially if you go to the 30 feet, because you'd be down to 70 feet, or 70, yeah, low 70s for a width. And where 90 is, is accepted. And I think it, only 220 feet, which is still a good sized lot. There are a lot more 20,000 square foot lots in the city. There's lots of places we could use them. But, and, and the thing of it is, and why I think the commission is real concerned about that, it is sewed, it is watered. The only thing that's putting you up from 9,000 square foot minimum is it's not curb and gutter on the road.
Right.
And that's it.
Right. Okay.
It's a pretty big jump.
So he can just get in contact with you concerning what that changed?
Yeah, it sounds like you want to see an L-shaped lot with 30-foot foot.
Depending upon what he wants to do, but I think for somebody down the road...
I certainly understand your point with that. I guess it's just, would you, would you prefer to see a 30-foot easement or an actual 30-foot lot design or with an L-shaped lot design?
I always liked the lot design because that's who's been paying the property taxes on it, is the owner.
Good point.
This other guy's going to pay property taxes on the 30 feet that he owns and he's getting assessed for it, but he's giving the easement away for it. Or some future, other one did. So I kind of prefer ownership and pay her on taxes myself, but that's a personal preference.
All righty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I add this?
I think the mayor's right. A property that has an easement on it, to me, has a diminished value because it's some way that's tied up the land where you can't use it. And then there's no worry about confusion with, you should keep up this much of the road, or you should do that much of the road, that kind of a thing. Also, just the fact that a 30-foot easement might, or a 30-foot leg might appear on this lot, some of my, as I recall, and I'm not real sure, but I think Mr. Abdella told me, the reason he said 20 feet was because there's a group, there's some trees that he didn't want to have to cut out. And he, he wanted to keep those trees on that residual lot. So just because there might be a 30-foot leg go out there, doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to have a 22-foot wide road going in and out. It allows for the potential to have that. And I think it's a good consideration because a lot of times, these easements are just a driveway essentially. You're, you're going to your house, you're the only one, there's no traffic on it.
Right, but when they said storage sheds.
In this case, there's going to be traffic.
Storage buildings. Multiple people are going there.
Around the corner, I know, because I have to go home that way on, by the elementary school, there are people that are actually conducting essentially yard sales or sales out of their storage units on the weekend. So they get quite a, they can get quite a carnival atmosphere if the owner does not have some restriction on how you use those units. And there's a lot of traffic on a weekend. When it looks like, you know, 10 storage units have opened up for a giant yard sale, I'm telling you what, better go a different direction.
It's a flea market.
So...
Economic development.
I think the, the questions the mayor raised are very good ones. And it's, it's hard, to be honest with you, to go out there and try to regulate things in the plains because people can do so many things without having to come to the city for anything, so. It's a challenging situation.
Do we have any communications? We had someone, I think you gave, they retained different cases. Announcements and other business, next meeting, 2:30 or 1 o'clock. It's the 24th, is that next week or the week after?
Week after.
So we, we're skipping it to make it...
I didn't know because we got goofed up on the date on this meeting. I didn't know if you wanted to have it at 1 o'clock about the comprehensive plan and nothing else, or what you wanted to do, rather do a meeting.
Well, she can't come on the 24th, you won't be there on the 24th.
I'll be on the way home, yeah.
You'll be, and you won't be here for next Thursday either.
No.
You'll be here next Thursday, but not the next?
Correct.
Okay. I never go any closer.
I won't be here this Thursday, probably even a long after that. I guess I'll peg that.
Okay, somebody tell us what we're going to do about the date here.
Well, we threw the finisher, I'll be at the end of the day, forget about it.
Where are you to be here?
I'll be here. I'll make it Friday.
Friday?
I'll make it then.
I can't come on Friday either.
You can't come on...
I'm, I'm out from Monday that week.
And is this, was this a hearing? Was that what your 1 o'clock was?
No, it was just, you wanted to meet on the comprehensive plan to talk about yet.
Yeah.
And you were going to do it at 1 o'clock. I don't know, I think we were going to put it in announcement in the paper.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were going to do it today.
I don't think it's listed as a public hearing, is it?
I don't, I didn't think it was.
I don't think it recorded, yeah.
I don't think we had to have one.
I don't think so, I think it was just for public comment.
I think it's been out, it's, it's at first, had first reading of council, I think it's probably best to get it done. I've gone through this, both stage one and step two. Made minor corrections, like it says TS Tech instead of TS Trim. It's got the South Wyat on East State Street instead of, you know, on Richland Avenue. There's little things like that that are, that are there.
That's even after the rest of us chewed it over.
You told me I was the reserve.
Yeah, because I know, I've gotten, so I looked at it so much and I really, I can sit there and read the pages and I don't really see what it says. I mean, I'll read it through and I think...
What did it read?
Are we at a point to adopt it now? Can we just do that?
I think so, but you brought the various appendixes to give to them.
Oh, boy.
One and two, if you have any questions, it's what, no? I'll be sure and do that.
I move that we adopt the comprehensive plan as amended.
One second.
Any discussion? Ah, who wants to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Not opposed, just don't, I don't like some of the things in it, but hey, that's all right.
Hey, it's a 20-year plan.
It's a 20-year plan. Hey, that's, that shocked everybody a bit when they find out. Now, the appendix, the appendix has really basically not been changed very much. What I did was break it up so it matches the breakdown. Appendix for the part one have the same lettering system and the same heading. So you can look at one and then go to the other one. So I've got it for both of those. So it's just a heading that will be a different, or, I think that's about all that was good. Okay, we have a thing here about changeable copy signs, says it right here.
I've got a suggestion about that. And that is that we confer with city council about how that fits into the sign ordinance because there's nothing we're going to be able to do about it. That it's not going to take council action. It seems to me it's similar for it just to go straight to council.
You're, you're comfortable.
Said for us to rewrite it and then send it on to you.
I think we outweighed all the citizens in the whole lot.
What?
There's not going to be any citizens to make comments.
No, but a citizen wants to make a comment. Well, I think we have to do, I mean, it has to be, there has to be something, so maybe we could get them together and work on it or something. I don't, I don't, what committee handles it?
Transportation.
Transportation, who's transportation? You, okay. Well, when you want to have a work session, we could, whoever could come, could come and we could look at it. I think we have to do something, I don't...
Well, I think when we do it, we ought also to look at the ordinance that governs street, governs street lighting.
Street lighting.
Because these changeable copy signs are going to have light involved with them anyway. And I think we need to do some...
So you're, well, we set a committee meeting, can you guys come?
Fine, yes, and Steve?
Probably if you can start a meeting.
Yeah, because everything's, everything's... That's okay with me, is that okay? Oh, we're, no citizens are here. You want, you're a citizen. Okay, minutes of July 6th.
It just handed corrections.
Yeah, we, we gave a couple of corrections. All right, so, did someone...
Moved there.
Moved as amended.
Uh, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we decide when our next meeting is?
No.
No.
When, when's our next meeting? Somebody decide.
Well, it's my understanding that if we do it the 24th, three of us can be here. And if you do it the 20, or the 17th, three of you can be here. It's just the, the third person changes, it switches between Peggy and I, you can get Peggy, you can get me. Doesn't matter to me.
Wait, let me look at my calendar, maybe I'm lying.
I mean, I don't know what cases we would potentially have within a week. Because I can't see that the summit coming back with anything that's, that soon after a preliminary. Landmark is not going to be back here for a couple of months, probably.
Why don't we just take vacation until September?
I just don't, we have this First Street thing, but other than that, I don't know. What do we really have, Steve, coming up?
Well, you got, I mean, just next Thursday at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, just drop that date, right? For information again.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, actually, if we make next week, it was today. That's what I'm saying, do we have anything?
Oh, for that, no.
No, so next week wouldn't do, but...
Next week, we don't really see a reason to be.
There could be something on the 24th, but if, unless it's something strange and startling and demanding of, that we could say to...
I'd say schedule one.
It doesn't matter to me, I'm going to be here either time, so.
Just so you know, too, anything that comes in, you have 60 days to act on it, like the planning developments. So you don't have to necessarily do anything for next week, you just have 60 days and then you'll get it.
Yeah.
So if we do the first Thursday in September, it hits the 7th?
That would be getting us back on our schedule.
Back on the schedule, that would be good.
I'll be back, yeah.
Well, why...
September 7th.
All the usual people, all the usual time. I think that, that would be better. Okay, then we have all our business done, you know what that means?
Move for adjournment.
Okay, it's 4:14, that would be...